I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have an interim city clerk, Amy Jensen, will give us roll call this evening. Thank you. Papa?
Here.
Troxel?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
White Canut?
Here.
Manville?
Here.
Kotwitz?
Here.
Horak? Okay. Mr. Atterbury, City Manager, would you review the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We -- the proposed agenda that you have in front of you stands as recommended. We do recommend adoption of the consent agenda, but there are no changes to the public's agenda, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, then, I would ask the opportunity for council or citizens to pull items from the consent calendar. And any member may ask to have an item pulled off the consent, and it will be considered separately. I would begin if anyone on council wishes to pull an item off consent.
Pull.
I am, yes. Oh. I will be pulling off item number 12, the moratorium on oil and gas extraction. Anyone else on council? Okay. That will be one of the first items on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to pull an item off the consent calendar? Yes, in the back of the room.
Item 11, please.
The items relating to rebates of property taxes, sales tax on food and utilities. That will go to the end of the agenda. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we will close the consent calendar review. At this time, we move to citizen participation. This is an opportunity for you to address us and speak to items that are not on the agenda. You may, however, address items on the consent calendar that have not been pulled if you wish to just make a comment. I see an awful lot of people here this evening. How many wish to address council? May I see a -- please, a show of hands.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. Okay. We will have two minutes. We only have one mic this evening?
No.
Oh, we have two. Okay. What I would ask, and this is for expediency for all of us, please line up in two rows behind each podium. It will help us a lot to keep things moving in an orderly fashion, and we will alternate sides so everyone has an opportunity. Okay? Having said that, we will begin. Please state your name and general address for the record.
My name is John Fai. I am a resident of Fort Collins. I live at 1405 Briarwood Road. Additionally, I am the Republican candidate for Colorado House of Representatives for House District 53, which encompasses all of Fort Collins, west of College Avenue, and part of southeast Fort Collins. I would like to address the council on violations of Fourth Amendment rights of a citizen here in the community. Recently, I read an article in the Colorado, which brought me great concern. I read that our sheriff's department forgot a GPS tracking device on one of our citizen's vehicles for several months, placed there without a warrant. That is unacceptable in my mind and a violation of the citizen's rights to privacy and from unlawful search and seizure as protected by the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution. I am here before you today to remind the mayor and members of city council that the sole purpose of government is to protect the rights of the people, not to oppress and intimidate them. Thomas Jefferson made this clear in our Declaration of Independence, and I quote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." Given that the actions of the Laramo County Sheriff appear to be in violation of such rights, I expect that you too will stand up for the rights of the people and to denounce actions such as this. Thank you for your time and attention.
For those of you that haven't spoken or aren't aware, a green light goes on when your two minutes starts, a yellow light goes on when there's 30 seconds left, and the red light means you're done talking. We will allow one sentence, and that's it. Okay. We are up to Mel.
Madam Mayor, Mel Hildgenberg, 172 North College, Fort Collins. First of all, good news is there's a lot of people. The bad news is I felt sitting down here like George Bailey when he went in to see Mr. Fodder to try to be bought off. Thank you, council, and all of the city staff, the wonderful, wonderful flowers all over town. Got my Foxes hat on tonight. Go Foxes. They're already 2-0. I would like to ask the council to join with CSU and some private concerns and preserve the Jack Benny hands by the Cash LePoudre Bank. And I would like you also to enter into a partnership to renovate the horse-drawn school bus that's in the trolley barn right now. Term limits. My first choice is to remove those altogether. My second choice is two four-year terms for the mayor. My third choice would be three four-year terms for the council and one six-year term for the mayor. Budget input, which I'll repeat at the open hearings. I would like to see you pursue actively retail sales tax on the Internet with a leveling fee for brick-and-mortar businesses. Legalize all organic drugs, including alcohol. Track, tax, and regulate heavily. And do something traditional on the economy and jobs. And quit being held hostage by globalist extremist progressives. Thank you.
Right.
No. That's one of the things we do not do, is have public outbursts or pro and con for something. So, please.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Distasso, and I work for a small nonprofit called the Fort Collins Community Action Network. In that capacity, I'm working with a group called the Fort Collins Corporation Separation Movement. We're wearing purple-blue stickers this evening. I provided packets for you. We're here to read a resolution and to encourage you to pass a resolution that would urge Congress to pass a constitutional amendment that would overturn Citizens United. Nancy York will pick up where I leave off, because we have to split this in half, and I want you to be able to thoroughly hear it. Whereas we, the people, are living human beings who have certain inherent and unalienable rights, including life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the guarantees in the First Amendment, freedom of conscience, freedom of speech, and of the press, freedom to assemble and petition our government, secure the right of the living people to democratic self-governance. And whereas the commercial corporation is a legal entity which has no inherent rights but owes its existence to its charter by a state or other government, and which can exist in perpetuity and in many nations at once, is not a citizen and is not entitled to vote. And whereas since 1886, some have tried to claim the Fourteenth Amendment, which was written to extend the rights of the people to the newly freed slaves, also applies to corporations as persons entitled to equal protection of the laws. And whereas in 1976, the U.S. Supreme Court, while upholding limits on the size of campaign contributions by individuals, also ruled that independent political expenditures constitute a form of speech protected by the First Amendment. Nancy will finish. Thank you.
And whereas in 2010, Nancy York. Whereas in 2010, in the Citizens United case, the Supreme Court, in a 5-4 decision, ruled that commercial corporations themselves have the right to independent political expenditure which is protected by the First Amendment and cannot be limited. And whereas the Supreme Court has provided the legal entity of the corporation with the right of self-governance, which inherently resides in the living people. And whereas the American people must choose whether to live under a government accountable to themselves or a government accountable to the commercial corporations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of Fort Collins, Colorado, calls for reclaiming democracy from the corrupting influence of corporate influence by urging our representatives in the U.S. Congress to provide an amendment to the Constitution stating that only human beings, not corporations, are entitled to constitutional rights, and money is not speech. And therefore, regulating political contributions and spending is not equivalent to limiting political speech. There are over 200 city councils and town councils who have already endorsed a similar resolution. This very week is called Resolutions Week, and more are being proposed all over the country. It is a wonderful opportunity you have, and a serious one, to consider whether we're going to have a democracy of the people or one totally influenced by money. Thank you very much.
My family came to Colorado by covered wagon in the 1860s.
Did you give us your name?
My name is George Meyer. I'm sorry. I've thought about moving to Fort Collins. So recently, I went down, and everybody needs to hear this. I went down to Old Town, talking to people. What do you think of Fort Collins? Any corruption? Any problems? Many people --
I'm Melanie Schur, 2613 Adobe Drive, and I am here in support of the resolution being presented to you by the Corporation Separation Movement. For me, money equalling speech implies that a privileged class of elites have more control over a policy output. If money is speech, then corporations are getting a platform and a megaphone via their corporate-owned medias. Then where does that leave the majority of us that don't have any money? It leaves us silenced. Unregulated money can be used to manipulate the public and intimidate our public officials. This deeply concerns me on a local level, because ultimately, decisions being made in the interest of corporations will eventually trickle down on us. The sole purpose of a corporation is to make profit at any cost, and this is dangerous to people, the environment, and our democracy. Allowing this basically rewrites our Constitution to favor corporate interests instead of human interests. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayors, ladies and gentlemen of city council, city staff. First of all, Sean Dowdery here, West Fort Collins. First of all, I'd like to thank you all. It's refreshing to have our city leaders and our city staff so easily accessible to the citizens, to meet with us, to listen to us, and to actually hear us. I commend you all for that. Second, I want to thank you for the changes over the past couple of years -- excuse me -- of years for the policies and procedures on how you vet new ideas and new suggestions that may go into effect in the city. You take a lot of period of time. You let a lot of citizens listen in, weigh in, and give you their thoughts on it. What makes me very comfortable is that guarantees to me that the correct decision is being made, the one that wants to be made by the city residents. With all that being said, I'd like to ask for the same extensive outreach that has been afforded certain items like the URA and PDOD for the conversation about the extension of term limits for city council members. One would think that something that is so important to the residents of Fort Collins that there would be at least a few different community meetings on the issue. I can't think of any that have been had. I'd like to mention that a recent poll of diverse voters here in Fort Collins found that 2/3 of community members are not in favor of extending the existing term limits, which were set in place by the state of Colorado. Additionally, 60 percent -- while 60 percent of these voting citizens would have been in favor of a citywide vote about this issue this year, that figure went down to 17 percent when they found out that it may cost in excess of $50,000 to have a special election just for this issue. Let's not rush this. If it's so important to the future of Fort Collins, to have an opportunity for city council members to have three consecutive terms, let's take the time to vet the issue and let everybody have their say. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Stan Scher with the Corporation Separation Movement of Fort Collins. In 1773, a group of protesters dressed as Native Americans boarded a British ship belonging to a British company called the East India Trading Company. They proceeded to destroy all the tea by dumping it into the sea. You see, in the 18th century, the British government had become deeply entwined with the interests of the East India Trading Company, a massive conglomerate whose shareholders included much of the British aristocracy. The colonists themselves perceived the East India Trading Company to be a monstrous monopoly, and were upset with their government and felt that their colonies were being used to enrich the pockets of these shareholders and thus the pockets of the aristocracy. This event, of course, came to be known as the Boston Tea Party and became a defining moment in the lead-up to the American Revolution and the creation of our country. Let's now fast forward to the year 2008, in a decision known as Citizens United versus the Federal Elections Commission, which held that the First Amendment prohibited the government from restricting independent political expenditures by corporations and unions, thus strengthening the position that corporations are people and enabling them to pump as much money into the politicians of their choosing to do their bidding. But I say to you that corporations are not people, for if they are, they are indeed people with special privileges, not being individually held accountable for their actions. They do not eat, sleep, breathe, or bleed, and they do not vote, per se. And yet, through their ability and the power -- through their ability and the power of their money, they have a tremendous impact on the outcome of our political process. Let us not forget what the great framers of this country envisioned and fought for. Let us not allow their tremendous efforts to be in vain. Members of the council, I thank you for the time, and I'd like to wrap up with one of my favorite quotes concerning this issue. "I will consider a corporation a person when Texas executes one." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Burnett. There's currently a wave of a new, more intense type of multifamily housing, higher intensity and rent-by-the-room. Several thousand beds -- and I'm -- beds in quotes are being built in this new type of housing for which the city has no standards to evaluate the projects by. A group of citizens from multiple neighborhoods has been providing information to our city leaders since April to document our concerns about the rapid rate of development. Today, we submitted a memo requesting council take two actions. First, to schedule a work session as soon as possible to examine the issue and to develop new standards for this -- standards for this new type of housing. Second, to place a moratorium on this type of project until those standards can be developed. Other communities have already taken this step or related steps. Scheduling a work session appears to be the best way to address these issues. In addition, the moratorium would allow the city time to develop and implement codes. We've proposed two specific objectives. First, to fully integrate the guidance of planning documents as well as the cumulative effect of projects into the development review process. Second, to develop specific standards specific to rent-by-the-room and other high-intensity multifamily projects. Examples would include measures of intensity, not just density. Parking requirements, which are also calculated by units, not by beds. Compatibility standards, which should be crucial in infill and redevelopment projects. And also, recently-approved provisions for streetlight-like drives. The proposed duration would be for 12 months to allow time to review the issues and develop standards. The impact of this type of housing is greater than comparable house-sized complexes for mixed demographic groups. Appeals, which until recently were rare, are becoming almost expected. I believe we wouldn't be seeing them if we were seeing multifamily complexes for mixed-age groups. By taking the time to adequately evaluate the projects, the city would be more likely to maintain quality of life in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I am Stacy Lynn. I am Jayden's mom. I never thought I would stand in public and have such a horrifying story to tell. And so, I stand here tonight because silence and fear breed corruption and crime. If I don't speak, I become an accomplice, and I refuse to lower myself into that toxic cesspool. On December 19th, 2011, I was illegally arrested just a few blocks from here. I was illegally jailed that same day. The night before all of that, my cellphone was illegally cell-tapped, wire-tapped. Do you know what the district attorney charged me with? Nothing. That's right, no charges. I was arrested, jailed, and my phone tapped for no valid legal or lawful cause. If you believe what Laramo County Sheriff Justin Smith proclaimed in the Fort Collins, Colorado, and you might think I was trying to kidnap my own son. Here's what really happened. Julie Kuntz Field is a judge just down the street from here. She issued a court order that was to be effective immediately, except she didn't serve me the order. Can you believe it? I was not even served an order. This is where it gets sickening. Field didn't serve me the order so I could be arrested, jailed, and then forced through extortion to place my son in a dangerous situation. Why did Smith and Field do this? It was the only way they could steal my son. I was ambushed and robbed of my legal and lawful right to protect my son from harm. At this point, you may be thinking, she must have done something wrong to have her son so violently severed from the only parent he has ever known, from his family, from his home, from his pets, from his school, from his teachers, and from his friends. An order that is issued effective immediately is unheard of. Why did Field do it? Well, maybe Field is thinking that exploding a boy's world effective immediately and without a single second of transition time is in Jayden's best interest. I will be allowing other people to finish for me. And I'm going to stand by -- this is my father. I'm going to stand by while he speaks for me.
Guess what I was accused of doing to my son? Nothing.
I need -- we need your name.
Bill Mawhinney. I've been a resident of Fort Collins 35 years. There was no involvement of Child Protective Services or the Department of Human Services. There were no accusations or intimations or hints that I was anything except a really good mom. Now, you may be wondering what all of this trauma has to do with you. This is why you should know our story. More than a year ago, I stood right here and explained to you about how this city and county has a serious problem. I told you that the innocent women, children, and men were being hurt by the crimes that are being committed inside these city limits by public servants who are supposed to be protecting innocent people. I told you in August that I was surrounded by three deputies while I was inside the so-called Justice Center. Remember? Those three deputies surrounded me for 13 minutes, and they thought it was funny. I wasn't amused. Do you know what I've been doing since my son was abducted in December? Ask Sheriff Smith. He knows exactly where I've been, what I've been doing, who I've been with, and where I eat, where I shop, and where I walk. He knows this because after I was illegally arrested, illegally jailed, and illegally wiretapped, Sheriff Smith decided to secretly follow me for five months. Do you know what they were planning to do to me while they were following me? In February of 2012, the county and the Attorney General were notified of my lawsuit against the sheriff and his deputies. Maybe that's why they were following me. What do you think? This is where the city of Fort Collins comes into this story. Crimes continue to be committed against me and my son inside these city limits. Reports of these crimes have been made to the Fort Collins Police Department.
My name is Jean Hines. Although the city may have wished to remain disconnected from Jayden's tragic case, that separation is no longer possible. During a meeting with District Attorney Larry Abrahamsen a few weeks ago, he read through a few of the statutory crimes that applied to Sheriff Smith's actions against me and my son. Those crimes have been committed in this city. I know that most of you on that panel have children. Can you imagine what kind of damage your child would experience if you were brutally separated from each other? How do you think your child would be doing mentally and emotionally if he had been stripped of his mom, his home, his friends, his pets, his family, his school, his teachers, his ties to his community, and his entire identity? What would you do to save your own child from that horror? Jayden has been gone for five months. That is 167 days, 4,008 hours, 240,480 minutes, 14,428,800 seconds. December 20th was the last morning that Jayden was a boy. He woke up for school that day and said, "Mom, I want to take a shower tonight before the Christmas program so that my hair is extra clean." I agreed. Jayden's brand-new Christmas shoes, his new suit pants, his freshly pressed white shirt, and his new red tie are still hanging in the very same spot as they were when he hopped out of bed with happy anticipation. His Christmas clothes remain untouched and unworn. Jayden did not get to go to his Christmas program this year. Statutory crimes, human rights violations, civil rights violations, and natural rights violations continue to be painfully committed against Jayden and me. My son is being used as a weapon. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Why? I think the editorial --
My children have a good friend, a little boy, who they also lost. His name is Jayden. Why? I think the editorial board from Fort Collins called around and said it best. Retaliation. These retaliation for what? Knowing my rights and the law protecting a small business owner, speaking out for targeted populations and for telling the truth. These crimes become wicked evil when an innocent child and his innocent mom are the targets of political retaliation. Unlike the officials involved in our case, I have not broken any laws. I have not broken any statutes. Recently, Jayden quietly asked me, "Mom, are there any good sheriffs?" I said, "Yes, Jayden, there are good sheriffs, and very soon you will get to meet one." Tonight, we're asking the city of Fort Collins Police and the Eighth Judicial District Attorney to prosecute Sheriff Justin Smith for statutory crimes. He's betrayed the public trust, and he's publicly admitted to breaking the law. We're also asking for the city of Fort Collins Police and the Eighth Judicial District to prosecute Judge Julie Kuntz Field for her statutory crimes. These crimes have been officially reported. Written statements have been submitted. We have case numbers. The taxpayers of Laramo County, and now the taxpayers of the city of Fort Collins, are going to have to be paying a high price for these officials' crimes. Are you satisfied yet with how much damage you have caused me and my son? When will you say enough is enough? And I just want to say that there's a lot of people here on this issue, and I haven't -- I've been involved in quiet ways in our community for many, many years. There's a lot more out there that are rumbling and that are active. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Heather Meyer, and I live south of Trilby. I've been a resident in Fort Collins for 15 years, and I have been involved with the nonprofit community ever since I graduated from CSU, which was 12 years ago now. I joined the United Way Grant Allocation Committee this year in October and began to devote a large portion of my time overseeing and participating in that process. I'm sure most of you have seen some of the press that has come out recently, any paper yesterday about the really huge shortfall that was announced to the agencies in the grant allocation. While there wasn't a set number that many people would be allowed to be granted, no expectation that they would have had, there was the expectation that the pot would be a certain size, which allowed them to frame their request appropriately. We were told that the pot would be roughly $1 million, and after going through a six-month process, after agonizing over decisions because even the $1 million was $200,000 less than the year before, we had some tough decisions. And after we made those decisions, those decisions were thrown out the window. All of our time was thrown out the window, and the United Way made their decisions based on that small amount of money. What this has done for a lot of agencies is really made them scramble. A lot of agencies received no funding. But one of the things that goes on top of that smaller amount of funding is that they previously have been awarded funds for three years, whereas now they're going to be awarded funds for one year only. That, again, was not communicated at the beginning of the process. My call to you -- My call to you is to, as a donation employer, to make your employees maybe question the practices that have been in place in that process.
Hi, I'm Rose Harvey. The citizens of Fort Collins are experiencing a double standard in law enforcement. There's one standard for citizens and another standard for the servants of the citizens. This can no longer be tolerated. As elected officials who are paid to implement our will and our demands under the United States Constitution, billerites, the First Amendment, we are demanding a redraft of grievances in regards to the outrageous conduct of our sheriff, Justin Smith, and other deputies of our local sheriff's office for their blatant and criminal violation of Stacey Lynn's rights by stalking her for five months using a GPS tracking device secretly mounted to the bottom of her car, admitting to stalking her and then lying about it. Felony aggravated harassment of a witness, since Stacey has a pending lawsuit filed against the sheriff's office for false arrest and false imprisonment also committed within the city of Fort Collins. Also felony aggravated harassment of a victim and failing to investigate reported child abuse and domestic violence, and acting in collusion with a judge, a servant put into a position of trust, Julie Kuntz Field, who has helped facilitate these crimes against Stacey and her nine-year-old son, Jaden. These criminal violations are gonna cost the taxpayers of Fort Collins tremendously, just like the Timothy Masters case that cost the city five million dollars and the county five million dollars. It's already been estimated that the violations against Stacey and Jaden have reached this amount. So as established by the First Amendment of our U.S. Constitution, I'm hereby making the demand that you, the elected officials, city council members, act upon your duties overseeing the appointed police chief, John Hudo, and see that he performs his duties in arresting Sheriff Justin Smith and all the deputies involved, along with Julie Kuntz Field, for these crimes which were committed within the city of Fort Collins. Failing to act upon your duties as elected council members...
You're done.
...will also constitute a violation of Stacey's and Jaden's constitutionally enumerated rights. Thank you.
No.
My name is Debbie Carroll, and I am an educator and psychologist. I am here to speak on behalf of Jaden Lynn, the child, in the situation where dangerous actions by Sheriff Justin Smith and Judge Julie Kuntz Field have been taken, which endanger his well-being. There are basic principles of child psychology and responsible adult behavior that result in successfully adjusted, confident young adults, and Smith and Field have violated these precepts. Whether adults realize it or not, their behavior teaches a very important concept to children called locus of control. This concept is the idea that a person has control over what he does and what will happen as a result. Children who understand this basic premise are characterized as being capable of making decisions, working toward a goal, having confidence, and having a sense of self-determination. Their world is predictable, and they gain a sense of safety from this awareness. They are able to trust the people and the forces of nature that also behave in predictable, controllable ways. But the world is not ideal, and neither children nor their parents have control over everything. Wise parents will prepare their children for unexpected and even upsetting events. While it is advisable to build some stamina in children for disappointment and sadness, it is generally believed that children thrive in an orderly environment over which they exercise some degree of control. Children should not live in fear of arbitrary, capricious adults, nor should they learn that they are powerless. The child custody switching process that has occurred in the last six months between Jaden and his parents has created a situation of imbalance, tension, unpredictability, dangerous to a child's well-being. Tearing Jaden from his home right before the holidays is inexcusable. Setting him up for a visit with his mother and canceling that visit is cruel. Laramie County Court and Law Enforcement personnel have not respected this most basic psychological need for predictable outcomes and reasonable transitions, and they should be held accountable.
I'm Maureen Patterson, a former teacher of twelve-plus years. During this time, I was constantly reminded that if I ever saw or knew of any evidence of child abuse, however slight, that I needed to report it immediately. Surely you, as city council members, also have been reminded of the same obligation and duty. The last time I saw Jaden, he was sitting on a blanket in a park with his mother Stacy, peacefully and happily having a picnic and listening to the music and speakers at the function. It was remarkable how happy him and his mother were together. Now, I hear of him being jerked from this loving environment that he has known all his life. Being put in the care of a stranger in a completely foreign environment, away from friends and family, would be traumatic for any child. This has to be an incredible abuse to Jaden. His loving mother was never accused of any allegations, yet orders were given for him to be removed and given to his father, who has documented anger problems. I am asking you to please investigate this abusive situation. Time is of the essence to prevent further compounding what would be a horrible situation for any child. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening. My name is John Malsby. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. I wanna speak just briefly about two things. One is called ICLI, and also ICLI is part of a bigger United Nations program called Agenda Twenty-One. ICLI is the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives or Issues. It was founded in nineteen ninety. There were two hundred local governments from forty-three countries. There are currently fourteen offices and two hundred staff worldwide, and there's twelve hundred cities that belong to ICLI. Fort Collins is one of them, as listed today on their website. One of the statements on the ICLI website says, "Now is the time for cities and countries to join together and restore living systems to safe conditions and define a way we can live and thrive on earth as a global community." One of the, as I said, Agenda Twenty-One, ICLI is part of that initiative. Christine Stewart, who is a former Canadian Minister of the Environment, made this statement. "No matter if the science of global warming is all phony, climate change provides the greatest opportunity to bring about justice and equality in the world." ICLI also pushes forth the idea of sustainable development. This was a concept introduced in nineteen eighty-seven by a gentleman by the name of Gro Harlem Bruntland, who was Vice President of the World Socialist Party. The Bruntland Commission made this statement. "Poverty is a major cause and effect of global environmental problems. It is therefore futile to attempt to deal with environmental problems without a broader perspective that encompasses the factors underlying world poverty and international equality." The ultimate goal of Agenda Twenty-One is to have a one-world government, one media, one authority for development. I find it interesting that a lot of Stacey Lynn's problems developed after she was trying to expose ICLI and Agenda Twenty-One. Thank you.
My name is Betty Aragon. I am from the Buckingham neighborhood. I am here to speak as a resident. I'm here to talk about Ride the Rockies event. Many of us found out about this event through the newspaper. We were not part of this conversation. We have three breweries in the radius of the Buckingham neighborhood. These events have negative impacts on our small family neighborhood. We realize that they are the ones with money, and many of us have been reminded of that by the new folks who support the breweries that are moving into our neighborhood. We have been told, they are the ones with money, not us. The impacts are not just noise and the amount of people that come to these events. Folks urinate in public. We are exposed to this. We are expected to endure this. It is not just the urination. It's drunken behavior. You know, we've been told that people are expected to have civic responsibility, but not everyone drinks responsibly. We've been told they're expected to have good manners. Drunks don't have good manners. Are we becoming a culture of drinking? Is this really the image that Fort Collins wants to portray? That we are beer city? We realize, we've been told, and we've seen it in the newspaper, how much money they generate. Listen, I know there's a lot of folks that love to ride bikes. I'm not against that. I know a lot of people like to go and have a beer. Drink responsibly. You know, the one thing that really irritates me to no end is that people go and they drink. They can drink themselves into oblivion. You know, that's not my business. What is my business is that they get behind the wheel, and then they drive out of there. Where is the police? No one is monitoring. You know, they take their children to this brewery. It's not a family affair. People are going there to drink. You can't take a child into a bar. You know, people can say that this neighborhood is positive growth. These are three of the oldest Hispanic neighborhoods in Fort Collins. We are about positive growth, but what we see is not positive. People can change the face of our neighborhood because many of us are moving out, but you will never be able to change history. Hispanics have been in these neighborhoods since the twenties. My family came to Fort Collins in the sixties. You know, we have people tell us all the time, and it's not just, these are people that are supporting the breweries, that they ask people, excuse me, people in my neighborhood about their accent, or they ask them, why do you fly the flag in front of your house? Why do we have to justify ourselves? We shouldn't have to. You know, this man that was asked, why does he fly the American flag? He's an American with a Texan background. He has not one, but five family members in the military. Why is it that we have to justify ourselves? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and City Staff. My name is Jeffrey Martin. I'm a resident of Fort Collins and also president of the Fort Collins Board of Realtors. A recently scientific valid poll of voters in Fort Collins shows that two-thirds or sixty-seven percent of community members oppose the idea of extending term limits. Voters in that same poll stand by the decision to impose term limits on the city council. In the first place, seven in ten say it was a good idea, or seventy-two percent. While a majority of voters, fifty-seven percent, are generally satisfied with council, and I congratulate you, that does not translate to extending members' term limits because sixty-one percent of voters who approve of the council's performance nevertheless oppose extending term limits. This proposal requires a more thorough discussion. We would recommend a citizen task force to consider the idea first, as has been done with other election-related charter changes in the past. It can always be added to the ballot in April or later if it is found to have merit. Putting this issue on the November ballot would be expensive because, as it stands, it would require a special election, which would cost the city taxpayers thousands of dollars it could otherwise be put to better use for the community. Any term-limited member of council wishing to continue their service can run immediately for the mayor's position in April twenty thirteen, and is successful, could serve as many as another six years on council for a total of fourteen consecutive years. Fort Collins term limits only require that those wishing to seek office beyond the eight years currently allowed by term limits to sit out for one election cycle. Three of the seven current sitting representatives have taken advantage of this option to continue their service to the city, and I thank you for it. If a charter change is going to be considered for term limits extensions, then it would be in the best interest of the community to assess a variety of election-related items, such as at-large representation versus district representation, election contribution limits, and other items that might be identified by a comprehensive community-involved process. We request that council and staff continue their good stewardship, good governance, and good policy regarding this process. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Marcela Lozano, and I live on East Lincoln Avenue, about a half a block from Odell's Brewery. I am here to object to the Ride the Rockies, simply because it causes so much chaos in the neighborhood. People park every which way, they do unruly things, they say unruly things, and I really think that there should be some police control, or, you know, at least be there when they're exiting in and out. The estimated show of people is approximately nine thousand that are registered. Now, even if half of those people show up to Odell's, that's four thousand. Where are they gonna park? They're probably parking like they have before in my driveway, in front of my house, every which way, you know? So we do need help with that. We need police protection from that. We need to curb these events. There is three breweries within a three-mile, or a one-mile radius of our neighborhood. I've lived in Buckingham for almost six, over sixty years, and I have never seen such chaos as there is now because of the influx of people going in and out of there drinking every day. About two o'clock, they start, and the handlebars people, the ones on the bars with the little things, they hold up traffic, they do all kinds of obnoxious things, they make gestures when you tell them, stop whooping and hollering, and I'm just really upset with those people. Thank you for listening to me.
I'm Elaine Bueno. I live in Buckingham neighborhood. I'm here to speak about the effects of the brewery events in our neighborhood. A lot of times, they're parking in our neighborhoods, they're walking through the neighborhoods, drunk, coming to your yards. They do urinate there, they make obscene gestures or say obscene things. I quite often have to leave my neighborhood during these times. I have three young children, and trying to teach them to be responsible young people is difficult when you have grown adults doing things with the fluctuation of the bike path that they put in. These neighborhoods have struggled for many years here in Fort Collins, without sidewalks for many years, without indoor plumbing, and here, a few breweries get built and they want bike paths, so they go up. But that isn't really keeping the people out of the neighborhood. They come, and, like I said, they're just unruly, like it has been said, and it's difficult. I believe that driving drunk is illegal, and driving a bicycle should be illegal, too. I don't know how many times bicycles have swerved in my path with drunk people, and all the friends just laugh and point at the friend who almost got hit. Something needs to be done to keep control of the bike riders when they're drinking and keep the people out of the neighborhood. I know they're, say that that's why the paths are, so that they can stay outside the neighborhood, but that doesn't seem to be working. Sometimes they put blocks that are to keep people from parking, but that doesn't really happen. So I would like somebody to look into the effects that the neighbors have to deal with from the breweries that surround our neighborhood.
My name is Naun Naun Ruiz. I live in East Twenty-Two Lincoln Avenue. I'm here to speak against the Ride the Rockies as well, ended at Odell Brewery. I'm entitled to peace and quiet by my house, and I think nine thousand people will for sure break my peace and quiet. I think Fort Collins has beautiful parks and outdoors, so why don't we just move this event to one of these venues? I also like to mention that the traffic is not enforced right on Lincoln Avenue. I see people pretty much using us the wrong way. It's supposed to be a thirty-five miles per hour road. I see people going sixty or seventy miles per hour, and I don't see the cop there for a month. Thank you.
Good evening. John Anderson, community member of Fort Collins. I'm here to support a resolution to end corporate personhood. First Amendment, the part about the right of people peaceably to assemble? By the litigation standards and interpretation of attorneys and judges today, this could be referring to only the people who assemble at approved corporate manufacturing plants for minimum wages only. This was clearly not the intent when crafting the First Amendment. I put forth, neither was it the intent of the Constitution to afford corporations of any kind personhood. Under any interpretation of our Constitution, we used to call mentally challenged persons derogatory terms like retarded. This term has found a new home, in my opinion, as well as the clearly disfigured and clearly political decision that money is speech, and it has come out that it's... political decision that money is speech, and it has come out, that it's come out of the majority of Mao's and activist minds of the highest judges in the land, who in my opinion are not worthy to don the robes of justices, the justices before them. There is no fixing this defiguring to democracy situation without more reasoned people of the grassroots protecting their democracy here before you redressing these abominations in a nonviolent form. Remember, the people are always right, and around 80% of recent polls agree with me, adopt this resolution to gain my respect. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Zach Heath. I'm a resident of Fort Collins, and I've come to urge you to adopt the resolution that would repeal corporate personhood. I believe this is a local issue. I witnessed the elections in Wisconsin today, and I think that's the beginning of a very dangerous road that would allow the outside groups to flood money into local elections and allow corporations to override the sentiment of the local citizens. And I look forward to talking to you about this further, and again, I encourage you to adopt this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, council members. My name is Clint Skidcon. I'm the CEO of the Fort Collins Board of Realtors, and here tonight to hopefully turn your eye towards the poll that we conducted in the community. It was a scientifically valid poll, covered by the Colorado one this weekend, and I know we reached out to many of you and even had the chance to visit with some of you one-on-one prior to that poll being made public, but we're truly hoping that it adds to the dialogue around what is a, at its core, a good governance issue. I think you all understand the importance of a following process when it comes to good governance issues, and one especially of this nature that gets to changing our charter at some point if we start talking about election-related items certainly is worthy of community input. And so we took some of the resources available through our Realtor and Consumer Average Casino Department and put them to use to conduct a community-wide poll. We hope that you'll find it to be beneficial. We're certainly happy to visit with any of you prior to next week's conversation and dialogue about election-related items, and specifically, I think, the one that's been most focused on being term limits. We truly believe that if this is looked at and the information is utilized, it's going to add to the community dialogue, which is why we commissioned it in the first place. And we certainly appreciate the opportunity to share that with each of you, whether it be one-on-one or just in general, and certainly hope the community looks at that as well. While I have the time in just a moment, I do want to also add a thank you, as I know you'll be convening the URA Board to discuss URA policies that was originally intended to go through back in January. We appreciate you taking the time there, doing a good job of putting a process in place for those who might be impacted by that to discuss it, and for city staff also to hear from those who have been involved in that. So really appreciate that, and I look forward to your dialogue on that. We also continue to support the PDOD process. We like it as it's moving forward and in its native-based process. So thank you, as always, for your time and for your listening. Have a good night.
Hi. Dee Amick, Park Street. I'm a friend and former neighbor of Stacy and Jaden Lynn. I attended a Laramie County family court hearing early this year, which resulted in Stacy losing parental rights of Jaden, who she formerly cared exclusively for. He's a friend of my daughters and a number of other kids on the block. Full custody was given to the natural father. As far as I can tell, there's no basis for the resulting ruling of that hearing. Stacy is an intelligent, law-abiding, ethical individual, and above all, she's a strong parent. I fear that her use of freedom of speech and her desire to share information has put her in harm's way. Not only has she been marginalized and discredited by this community, son and mother are now suffering terribly during this separation. Jaden is innocent, yet he is being punished and traumatized by this entire situation, by his new living situation, by his loss of his mother, and by the treatment of his I ask you, who is acting in the best interests of the child? Who is acting in the best interests of Jaden in this situation? And who has the courage to do what is right? I feel like people are acting like they're part of some kind of high school clique. I've even talked to officials and service personnel, and I get negative comments about Stacy Lynn, and this is about a really bright boy who's being severely damaged. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Bill Miller. Live over by City Park in Fort Collins. I'm here to address the issue of a constitutional amendment that would reverse the Citizens United decision by the Supreme Court, which was effective in, I think, January of 2010. I think we're seeing something playing out in Wisconsin today. I don't know the results yet, but there is a prime example of why Citizens United needs to be reversed, because that election, the recall election of Governor Scott Walker, has had so much outside money thrown at it, it is basically taking away the democratic principles of local elections or even state elections. So I heartily encourage you to make a resolution that will require a constitutional amendment to reverse Citizens United. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Austin Monhop, and I'm more on the Jaden side of the Stacy Lynn case, because I've gone through all that trauma and everything, and the physical abuse that it seemed like the courts allowed to happen, and were able to make a profit off of it. Because from what I've seen, and from what I've lived through, and from helping all these other people around the nation, it seems like the judges and attorneys put the kids in the abusive homes, or whatever the scenario is. So the good parent, because they know that the good parent would pay whatever it takes to get them out of that. So that's, to me, and from what I've seen, it seems like that's their way of making money. And I just completely think that it is unfair to us kids. I had a friend earlier this year that actually went through it, and from what I've seen, it seems like the government literally, like, killed him. Because he was going through everything, and he was put on antidepressants for no reason at all, and he ended up dying once he got out of rehab and all that, once he got his life straight and good, and going good for him, and a chance to actually have a future. He got put back on the antidepressants because the courts believed it was right. And to take someone's life away that's close to you, and close to a lot of people, is not right, and that's the way it sounds like, and it seems like this country is going, not just necessarily Laramie County, but this whole country is going to. There've been a handful of kids that have died nationwide, and I fear for my sisters every day that they're gonna end up dying because they're still in the households. Thank you for listening.
My name's Laurie Wallace, and I have a question for the council. Have you ever heard of kidnapping without a ransom note? No, because it's called abduction. And this is exactly what has happened to Stacy Lynn. Her child has been legally abducted by the legal system in this town. Now, you'd notice I didn't say he was legally kidnapped. That's because she would have had the opportunity to have a ransom note. With a ransom note, you could at least buy back the freedom of the person who's been kidnapped. Stacy Lynn doesn't have that opportunity. She's had her last three legal child visitations torn away from her. I mean, she's not even able to see her son legally in this city. I mean, the injustice is absolutely ridiculous. So I'm asking the city council, would you please look at this injustice and do something about it?
My name is Stacy Christine. I work on a national level, raising awareness as to what is happening and why our children are being kidnapped and forced to live in abusive situations. It is very saddening and sickening to see that we would take the innocence of these children to do this. I have several cases that are nationwide cases. I do believe that the Jaden-Stacy Lynn case is going there. I believe that it would be an opportunity for the city and county of Fort Collins and for Laramie County to set a precedence for the nation that this is not acceptable to be happening by a corporation that is supposed to be protecting and serving the innocence of these children.
My name is Chuck Churchman. I'm from Denver. I come up on a regular basis to support Stacy Lynn. Something that has not been brought up this evening that I have to bring up is, this is not about a divorce, a bad divorce. They were never married. This fellow, Jeffrey Pappenhyde, came out of the clear blue and tried to lay claim to the son that he fathered, but that boy was in Stacy Lynn's custody for nine years. He had never met the man. I am incensed, all right, that this could be going on, that somebody could actually take them away. How does somebody who has never even married to a pregnant woman come back and lay claim to a kid nine years later? That is wrong. Further, the reason this happened is because Stacy Lynn is a great teacher. What she's been teaching people about is ICLI, which has been mentioned here several times tonight, the International Council on Local Environmental Initiatives. If you Google it, you will find John Hickenlooper's name at the top of the list. In fact, most of the politicians here know about ICLI. We found that out, we found that out through actual talking to them. One of them even told us, and he quoted it perfectly, said the point of ICLI is they say personal property is dangerous. Children are personal property. So this is being, this is being forced on Stacy Lynn because she's been teaching people about this, and I personally think that you as human beings should at least support her in her endeavors to get her child back. Please, I beseech you, help us with this and get Jaden back to his mother. Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance that we recited and concluded with the words...
Please give us your name, please.
...John wines, concluded with the words, "With liberty and justice for all." So I'd like to point out to the members of the city council that as long as men like Timothy Masters, who was railroaded by Police Officer Broderick and thrown in jail for 10 years for no reason, and Stacy Lynn, whose son was illegally abducted by government officials, that as long as this, these situations exist, that we do not have liberty and justice for all. These are just meaningless words that we recite. So I would urge the city council to carefully examine into these charges of injustice and criminality. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen participation element of this meeting and bring it back to council. I'm going to take the liberty to consolidate some of the discussion that went on here, if council would be okay with that. First of all, in general, I would like to address the issues that we've heard regarding the county and the sheriff, and in general terms, where is the role of the city when it comes to county issues and what we've heard here, and what is our possibilities or lack thereof? If you could just, in general, address the role of the city as it plays with the county? We've had a lot of people ask us for action, so if you can generalize that for us?
Perhaps I could start with a general description of the powers of the council, and they have to do with making policy for the city and making laws for the city, and those are the ordinances of the city. The council and, well, the city manager is the head of the city government, and so he, the chief of police, answers to the city manager. In terms of the relationship between the city government as a whole and the court system, the court system is separate and apart from the city government, and by the court system, I'm referring to the state court system, not the municipal court. And it's my understanding that there's a case that occurred in Laramie County District Court, and people are very concerned about the judge's ruling in that case and some action that was taken pursuant to the court's ruling. The council has no authority to overturn the ruling of the Laramie County District Court. There is an appeal system, and I assume that the people who are concerned are aware of that and have availed themselves of whatever remedies might exist there. There are concerns that have been expressed about the conduct of members of the Laramie County Sheriff's Department. The council has no jurisdiction directly over Laramie County's law enforcement activities. The city police are empowered to enforce the penal laws of the state as well as the city, and if there is an allegation of criminal misconduct on the part of any person within the city limits, police services has the authority to investigate those allegations and the discretion to make a determination as to whether probable cause exists to commence or to present, in the case of state laws, potential prosecution to the district attorney. It's the district attorney and not the city that's ultimately responsible for determining whether those kinds of crimes should be prosecuted. So in summary, in my view, in looking at and considering the allegations that have been made, the potential role of the city government would be limited to the possibility of investigating and presenting to the district attorney for potential prosecution any criminal conduct that may have occurred on the part of any person within the city limits.
And there was a reference to our police chief and his relationship to enforcement of action against the county sheriff. Is that in his purview?
As I said, any person. The question is whether or not, in a situation such as this, where the allegations are against other law enforcement officials in the city, whether it would be appropriate for another agency, assuming that the facts warrant investigation, which I'm not saying is a foregone conclusion, to be involved through a mutual aid agreement with another police agency. So it's not that the sheriff or any person is exempt from possible investigation. It could be a question of the propriety of or the appropriateness of another law enforcement agency investigating particular allegations, depending upon who's involved.
Thank you. Any council comment regarding this? Okay. Otherwise, I was going to, oh, I'm the sheriff? Okay. I was going to move to one of the second topics, which seemed to, it dealt with what I would call brewery bikes in Buckingham. The question I have, first of all, there were questions regarding security, safety, enforcement when it comes to the breweries. I think I would like some kind of response for the people who spoke about what is going on in that kind of triangular area where there is a proliferation of breweries and enforcement that goes with it. I think we... I think we, secondly, we need to answer with Ride the Rockies, what mechanisms are in place with enforcement and security that will happen when the riders do come into the city to help alleviate some of the issues that they feel will happen? If you could-